All this Jackson County Commission, continue meeting, excuse me to order. Have a roll call please, Mr. Erickson.
District one, Tim Gackey.
Present.
District two, Jason Venka.
Present.
District three, Dennis Miller.
Present.
District four, Stacy Leble.
Present.
There's a call present.
We can conduct business. Mr. Ford, through your education, you've been in my prime. Next item is approved agenda of our continued meeting. We have two items, one old business and one new business. And only note I'd like to make on that old business is that we also reschedule the meeting on the 18th to the 25th, the 18th to the holiday. So with those items on the agenda, I have a motion to approve the agenda for the continued meeting.
Motion.
Motion, there in a second. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay. Move on to the first item, old business, and this is from the continued meeting, setting a day for immediate meeting on the 12th at Northland Mountain High School. We've been discussing this when Janet had set the last meeting we had, and kind of needed to vote on it, so I'd like to ask that we set that meeting date for the 12th. It'll be somewhat of a work session, but kind of a community discussion out in the community, give folks in the community the opportunity to sign in and address any issues, and then for us to share what's going on on the county side. And in addition to that meeting date, I'd like to also add that we changed the meeting from the 18th to the 25th President's Day, so we'll have our work session on the 25th at 5:00 p.m., following like a regular meeting on that day. So we can approve those together or separately. You have a motion to make that change?
Make a motion, proceed.
Motion, there in a second. Any discussion questions on this item? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Okay, next item is regarding the credit card for the county. I'd like to ask if the commission increase, or request an increase in the credit limit on the credit card. We've got a lot of this training that's coming up back-to-back over March, or February and March, and to be sure that we don't have any issues there, I'd like to ask that we increase that card to $10,000. So, and open this up for any discussion before we proceed for a vote, but this is the first time it's brought to us.
What is our current limit?
Five thousand, if that makes sense.
Five. How many cars do we currently have?
Just one.
Just one?
And it's used only for travel, for the commission.
As you know, we've got the back-to-back dates in February and two travel days in March for that training that we have, so.
And that's kind of overlapping them, the cutoff date to the card.
Any questions or comments? Then entertain a motion to approve the increase in the credit limit?
Absolutely.
Motion, there in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay. That concludes the items on our continued meeting, so at this time entertain a motion to adjourn the continued meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion, there in a second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, adjourn, and we'll go right into the work session. Call the work session for February 4th to order. First item is approval of the agenda for the February 4th meeting. We have nine items on our agenda this evening, so entertain a motion to approve the agenda with those items.
Absolutely.
Okay, a motion, do we have a second?
There.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We've had no one to sign in to speak in addition to the agenda items, so we'll move on to our discussion items. And the first item is the council on aging budget. Ms. Leber, do you have some copies of this?
I have copies, okay. Mr. Chairman, we had discussed this earlier. Due to some retirements that we have with our program, we have some benefits, some money in our administration fund that we would like to change over to our operations fund. We have a driver that we need to put full-time, this is for transportation. We're not changing any of the other budgets, but we have a driver that needs to go full-time so that we can get her own insurance and get her available, have her available, and we just need to change the funds over from admin to operating. And if you have any questions on any specific one items, I'd be happy to answer those, but that's the basics.
And the bottom line, as you'll see, it's very bottom there, the bottom line on the previous budget is the same as the new proposed, but if there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next week. And like to see any other questions, those who will try to get those answered for next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding County roads, Mr. Hamp.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, fellow citizens of Jackson County, and those who are not from Jackson County, citizens or visitors, in a meeting once I was mistaken for not a citizen. I am a citizen, but you know, I'm like the original Americans. I'm the first generation American, so I guess you can tell from the way I talk. And thank you for letting us talk. I say us, and talk about the county roads. My wife gave her mind, should take about 30 seconds, and my friend Leon Galati, he'll take a few minutes. We moved to this county in July 2009. What a beautiful country. In the fall of 2010, next year, the house next to me, its construction began. In the winter of 2010 and 11, the little road, it's barely 800 yards long, County Road 838, became mush. So I met the county chair person, your predecessor, my wife and I both, in the spring of 2011, requesting a phase to the road. A week later, I was told, it's not a county road, it's a private road. It was built by a contractor, that whole development belongs to Mr. Galati, and he had that road built. So anyway, I went back to him, he told me, give me the history. Apparently, we were told, took about a few months, we were told the matter had been resolved, it's had been regularized, it's now a county road. And they came and they did, what do you call it, tar and gravel?
Yeah.
They did tar and gravel, and it's private, we don't want anything expensive. Money's short every day, as long as it works, that's all we need. The, your predecessor promised that it would be paved next year, that was 2012. So anyway, I met her in August 2012, and I went to your office maybe twice, we met your people, you were not there, Mr. White, no. I mean, every time we went there, you were out doing your job. And you know, we were told that, we got a message from your secretary saying that we have instructions to maintain this road, that it's not a county road. We have instructions only to maintain this road. So I came back to the chairperson, asked what was going on. And all I was told was that this was supposed to be paved, and somebody took it off. So she had maybe 10 days in the office, so I said, can you do something? Nothing happened. Anyway.
It's been several years ago, when Mr. Galati acted over the subdivision, and they brought it before the county commission at that time, which the chairman's name, Jerry Walker, chairman's name, is that person?
James Kidmore.
Kidmore, yeah, Mr. Kidmore, county. And they brought it before the commission to be approved, and actually the process of approving the approval of subdivision, maybe accept the relevant subdivision some 12 months later, that's the time, the last time, he said, well, we called it 12, we had no record of a county road. Since that time, Mr. Galati has went and retrieved copies of those letters with the Mr. Kidmore's signature on it, which states that it was their intent for that to be an acceptance of the county road. We have that road based on former commissioners' approvals, as the Collin County road, so to answer your question, it is a county road. It is a county road, based on previous commissioners' approvals. Mr. Ford, I have something to give, I had.
You recall, you recall?
I do, and it seems that my recollection is that there was the minutes from 12 years, 10 years ago, whenever the subdivision was approved, it went clear. And that's the reason we asked for clarification from the previous commissioner. And then with, as I recall, the minutes from the last commission indicated that if those commissioners would so state that it was their intent, then they would take it in county inventory without a guarantee.
We didn't receive, we didn't receive a letter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, citizens of Jackson County. Appreciate this opportunity. Just a brief introduction of the gentleman who will be giving you the short briefing today on nuclear safety and nuclear history. Mr. David Lockbaum is the director of Nuclear Safety Project for the Union of Concerned Scientists. Mr. Lockbaum served many years as a nuclear power plant operator with the TBA, and also served as nuclear technology instructor with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. Mr. Lockbaum has testified before Congress and NRC on many occasions concerning nuclear safety, and has provided each of those bodies on the occasion with form analysis of the nuclear industry's operations. For that reason, our local environmental group, the Belfont Efficiency and Sustainability Team, has asked Mr. Lockbaum to make a presentation to you today, so that when y'all are asked to make important decisions concerning Belfont Nuclear Power Plant, you will be better advised on nuclear power issues which may come for you. Mr. Lockbaum.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for this time. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about nuclear power outlook, hopefully at a level that's not at a level, but some recommendations that you could use for your community here in Jackson County. I want to start with a discussion, something called, a brief discussion, something called the bathtub curve, which is the failure rate of products, people, cars, nuclear power plants, et cetera, over time. It's called the bathtub curve due to its shape. On one end of the curve is the break-in phase, where the chance of failures will get higher due to operator error, bad products, or bad assembly. The other end of the curve is the wear-out phase, where the chance of failure once again goes up due to aging and broken or other degradation over time. If you look at the break-in phase of the nuclear bathtub curve, there's some lessons that might be learned from that. Overall, in the United States history, 263 reactors have been ordered. Of those 263, 104 currently operating today, 28 have been permanently shut down, 127 were canceled before they ever split any atoms and put in operation, and four reactors are currently under construction in the United States. In addition to the reactors that were canceled during construction, a number failed early on in their life, including Chernobyl, Trima Island, and Brown's Ferry had a fire here into its life, sodium reactor experiment in California. All these disasters occurred in the first year or two of the plant's lifetimes. If you look at the other end of the curve, the wear-out phase, I mentioned there are 28 reactors that have been permanently shut down. These reactors are licensed for 40 years. Their owners and their communities thought they were going to get roughly 40 years of usefulness out of their own power plants. On average, those 28 reactors operated for 14.3 years, well short of their expectations. In fact, none of the reactors that are currently shut down made it to the end of their 40-year operating lifetimes. Of the 132 reactors that did operate for various periods of time, 31% had costly year-plus outages, safety problems build up over time and took more than a year to correct. Only 91 reactors operated without ever having a year-plus outage. 30 reactors had one year-plus outage, 11 reactors had two year-plus outages in their lifetimes. It happened across the country from west coast to east coast and in between. On the other end of the curve, the wear-out phase, the Fukushima accident last year in Japan, or two years ago now, in Japan, was three weeks shy of its 40th birthday. Some contend that this disaster wasn't related to aging or the wear-out phase, because tsunamis can hit anybody at any time, which is true, but a few years prior to that accident, it was determined that that plant's seawall, protected from tsunamis, was shorter than it needed to be. Did the owner decide not to repair or upgrade the seawall, because the plant only had a few years left, decide not to do more protection measures, or not? It's in hindsight, they're now building taller seawalls for surviving plants, but it was too late for Fukushima. I mentioned there's currently four reactors being built, two in Georgia, two in South Carolina. Later this spring, in April, a plant in Wisconsin will be permanently shut down due to core economics, it's short of its 40-year lifetime, it's not going to make it. And there are four reactors in the United States that have been shut down for more than a year due to various safety problems. It's not determined yet whether they will or will not restart. Crystal River 3 in Florida, looks like it won't, because the price of fixing it is just $2,000,000 over $1,000,000. Some other plants may or may not. With that background, I can't tell you what the local outlook is. My forecasting, I have more of a, I don't know, I have a crystal ball, I have more of a bowling ball for projecting the future. There are some things that we can see with some precision, and there are other things that we can't. As far as the questions of whether the reactors at Belfont were operating, I don't know, I think there's very speculation, but I don't think anybody knows for certain. And the related questions to the nearby reactors over in Brown's Ferry in Alabama, in Leominster County, how long will they operate? They're licensed for, they haven't been extended, operate for 60 years, they haven't made 40 yet, will they or won't they? That's a bowling ball, I can't tell you what those answers are, I wish I could. But what I can tell you is if the Belfont reactors start, or if the Brown's Ferry reactors, they will at some point shut down, they're not in order. History has shown us that most often, they will shut down unexpectedly. They'll not be a five-year plan that allows everybody, the workers, the owner, and the communities to plan for that. It will come out as a surprise and quite a bit as a shock when that day comes. In addition, if you look at the plants that were canceled during construction, you don't cancel a plant two years in advance, you generally, it's about a year after you probably should have, so that also becomes surprising as well. Now, that's for the poster child for that, is the Shoreham Nuclear Plant on Long Island. It cost approximately $8 billion to build, it cost approximately $1 billion to dismantle, it never generated a watt of nuclear electricity, so it was the most expensive electricity never generated. It was a big hit on the local community when the owner pulled the plug and decided to dismantle. There were a bunch of jobs, there were tax revenues, there were a lot of infrastructure issues that were unexpectedly changed dramatically when that plant currently shut down or was canceled. So I think the lesson that may be applicable to you would be that perhaps contact, reach out to your counterparts at the county, at the city level in some of these areas, on things they did to plan for these days, or things that in hindsight they wish they would have done to plan for these days, whether it's planning for, setting aside some money for job relocation, job retraining, to retain the jobs in the communities, whether it's some things they did or wish they had done to soften the tax cut or the tax revenue change happened rather dramatically, or if there's other things they did which could be lessons to you to how to help this community deal with life after nuclear, because of the crystal ball thing, that day is coming, I just don't know when it's going to be. And I think some of these communities, in the Sacramento plant, outside of Sacramento, the Rancho Seco plant, they did some things to keep the jobs in the communities. They built some more energy production facilities on that plant site, because it's a large footprint, so they built some solar panels and some other things to keep costs down, electricity costs did not jump up. They also retained some of the jobs in the area to help the local community and to keep, there was a workforce there, it's a shame to see it go elsewhere when the plant shuts down. So I think there's a number of plants around the country, the number of situations that may provide lessons on things to do here, or some things to avoid there. So I think that would be the lesson today, our line message today was that there are some case studies that may be very useful to you as you make decisions in the future. I'd be glad to put you in touch with some of those communities and the people I know in those communities, we'll provide you whatever documents we have on some of those case studies if it will be of interest to you. So I'd be glad to help in that regard. I also have copies of these remarks, if that will be helpful to you as well. Appreciate the time again, and if we can help you in the future, please let me know. Thank you.
Any questions or need some order, Mr. Lockbaum? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item is the temporary hiring policy. We had approved temporary policy, and there were some changes after we went through our first process that I wanted to submit. Primarily, the changes in this process include redefining the committee that does that to include the personnel director, and also to allow for basically promotion from within or hiring from within if there's someone qualified immediately within. So those two, those are two items in this hiring policy I'd like to take a look at, if you will, over the next week. And if there's no objection, I'll have to place that on the agenda for next Monday night as well. Any questions or comments on that at this time? Okay. Next item is ALDOT project. Mr. White, do you want to?
This is our annual, we're annual federal grants that we give every year, and this is a county road plan. Does everybody here want to leave a thank you statement? January 22nd of ALDOT.
Yeah.
I wanted to do that, because y'all know what this is. Basically, we get $533,000 from the FHW year, FHWA every year, lock on the third. Recently, it gets going on, I'm going to use it for this time, which is already been approved and set up. But if y'all turn over to page two, since this is really y'all's first one, I thought we kind of explained this first, if we could. Down at the bottom, out of H, if y'all see it, it's got a breakdown of the funds. If y'all see there, the total cost of this project is $588,000. Of that is our 20%, which is about, starting from that, make more sense. Our 20% right above that will be $117,000. If you look over the next two lines up, you'll see the first line over the left that says FA funds 2012, we're using $252,740.62 of that. Basically, what that tells us is the 2012 funds is the one we got in October of 2011. So we have completely expended all those from this project, so what we will have left then, everything that remains of that has to come out of the 2013 funds, which is what we got in October 2012, as recently. And I bring all that to attention is, whenever we get these federal funds, they are controlled by a timeline, and we have to use these funds within 19 months of the date we give. So what that tells us is, when we push this on a little bit quick, when we get this done over there, our FA funds 2012, those have to be committed by May of this year, June and October. The remaining part of 2013 funds, which is simply $533,000 minus the $217,000, which is going to be as likely to be committed before May of 2012.
What would you say that remainder was?
The remainder that will happen, the remainder of 2013 funds would be the $217,000 taken away from the $533,000, the $533,000. So the next federal fund, whatever the difference in that is, that's the first line out of this, just kind of ongoing process. But I wanted to bring that to attention, because we have to kind of keep up with it or we'll lose those funds if they're not done by, committed by May of the following year, I believe, I would say.
Questions or comments on this?
Have these 2012 funds been received by us?
No, we never see them, the state, we usually, they pay the contractor every, whenever we ever.
But we have exhausted that amount so far on this field, correct?
Yeah, when we, when we do this project, we've got $212,000 of funds, you can offer.
Have we done any of this project yet?
No, no, there's nothing we've done with it.
This has to be approved.
This has to be approved, yes. They'll have to be approved later on, even if we have to come back with some more type of work on it afterwards, and this might support what we set our matching fund, if we have a, 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 a fourth company.
I got a question, on funds, is where did County Road 11 come from?
What?
I mean, this is a state-approved county road. I mean, how did that decision, was it made by your office in conjunction with the state?
The, the state does maintenance inspections every year.
On County roads?
On County roads. They come in and they grade everywhere, everywhere out the state has, state money or I.A. money or any kind of federal money, anybody's government, they grade all those roads. And what we try to do, we try to look down, the ones that's getting the bottom grades, and that's the ones we work on, you know, just kind of the bottom process, you know, with County Road, we're looking for the lower grades this time, so we, we picked it because of the grading.
So basically, no county roads, if they hadn't ever received federal funds or state funds before, will never be on this list.
Correct, yes, yes, probably, they're not, they're not eligible for state, or they require, we have this particular year, we have this particular year.
So the question that we place this on the gen, I guess we could do?
Yes, there's also, there's some attached resolutions back here that have been built out, what we'll be doing, just to prove the disagreement, and in there's a, a resolution on Black Lake, the head of America.
So there's just one resolution now?
Yeah, one resolution.
Will you do the motion, and we can stay with the resolution?
Mr. Ford, if you have time to review that, if there's no objection, we can place this on next week's agenda. Okay? Thank you, Mr. White. Next item, the Southern Health Partners Health Service Agreement for the jail, Mr. Erickson.
Yes, this is an annual renewal. We bid this out a few years ago, I believe, 2011 was the last time that we bid it out. It had the optional renewal process in the bid, and so this is simply you approving to continue with Southern Health Partners Health Services for the jail.
Questions or comments on this item?
I would like to ask the sheriff department if y'all are, is Southern Health Partners adequate for your needs?
Yes, they are, they're doing a good job, and as you well know, that's a big responsibility to do the health care for the jail inmates, and they do a wonderful job of taking care of that, and most of the costs are, that they pay for. Obviously, a few things we have to pay for that are special needs, but most of the stuff they care about.
It's $246,000 annual base fee, and then it can vary depending on certain messages that you have there. But they have, I wanted to also notate that they have agreed to continue with the same pricing as last year, so it did not go up at all.
Any comments?
This is budgeted funds, I already said.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, if there's no objection, then we'll place this on the agenda for next Monday night as well. Next item is regarding a safety coordinator resolution. Mr. Mike Ashburn with the EMA has been serving as the safety coordinator for the past number of years, as I understand, and he has brought to my attention that there are several things that we as a commission need to approve in order to make sure we keep our safety rating, and this is the first step in that process. Well, we need to look at forming a committee and all those things, but I would like to ask that next Monday night, we approve this resolution to appoint Mr. Ashburn as the safety coordinator. He has gotten me information on some of these other things that we need to approve, and we'll review that and then hopefully get that to the commissioner over the coming weeks. This will be the first step, so I'd like to ask to review that as quickly as possible. Questions or comments on that? Next item is a roadblock policy. I have several comments and questions in regard to the way that the policy's been conducted. What you have in your packets right now is just what we're requesting right now when someone does ask for a roadblock. I'd like you to take some time to review that, and I'll talk with you in the future, and put this on a work session in the future so that we can discuss more in depth some of the issues that come up with this. This is just for your review at this time. The final item we have is a district voting resolution. This was brought to us a couple- This was brought to us a couple weeks ago. In regard to moving forward with this process, if you have a copy of this in your packets, I think there were some small changes to it, but I'd like for everyone to take a review of this, and if we need to move forward with this, then we can place this on the agenda next week, or whenever we need to move forward with this process. Are there any questions or comments on the resolution that you have before you now?